Good evening and welcome to our November 25th Town Council meeting. God bless you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. So, good evening, and I would like to start by wishing everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. And if you're traveling, let's hope the forecast is wrong for tomorrow and everyone can travel safely. So we have a lot of things coming up, so I would like to start our agenda with the public information officer to let us know what's on our agenda for the township.
Hello, council members. Hope you're well. Happy Thanksgiving. I'm not sure if a lot of people know this, but the West Orange Police Department has a program in place where residents can call them if they're going away for the holidays or any vacation, and they'll flag your address with emergency contact information. So if you want to leave your contact phone numbers, if you want to have your keyholder information, any information of how to get in touch with you in the event of an emergency while you're away, you can call the police department and they'll be happy to do that for you. The phone number, as you know, is (973) 325-4000. And also, the Department of the Community Service Unit has kicked off its annual holiday food drive. It goes on from now until Christmas. They're collecting non-perishable food items. The collection points are the Llewellyn's Edison Savings Bank at 474 Prospect Avenue, and also at 83 Northfield Avenue. And they're also collecting at Shop Right at the Essex Green Plaza. We have something new added to our website for our tax information in our tax department. You can receive email reminders from the tax collector's officer. You can sign up to receive calendar alerts from the office prior to your payment being due. You can, you will approximately 14 days prior to these payments, you'll receive an alert from the tax collector to remind you. And you can sign up at our website, westorange.org.
Sounds like a good thing, but I don't know if anybody wants to be reminded that...
Well, you never know. You never know who's going to. On Sunday, November 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00, we're going to be celebrating the end of Movember with a Movember party. It's going to be at the Essex House at 525 Northfield Avenue from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And there's also still time to donate. You could donate to our team at westorange.org/movember. Let's see. On Thursday, December 18th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., the West Orange African Heritage Organization is having its, hosting its annual Kwanzaa celebration at Washington Elementary School, 289 Main Street. This is a free event and open to the public. Excuse me?
What is it?
Oh, it's Thursday, December 18th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. And on Monday, December 22nd, at 3:45 p.m. at Town Hall, we will be lighting the, having our annual Hanukkah menorah lighting. That is free and open to the public. Pneumonia and flu vaccinations are available to residents 18 years and older, and you can go to westorange.org/health and find out if you're eligible. And finally, our curb leaf pickup continues through December 31st. You can look at the leaf collection schedule at westorange.org. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jessica. Talking about the Community Service Unit, we do have Lieutenant John Morella here this evening to start a new program. We have encouraged so many neighborhoods to start neighborhood watches, watch groups. This is a little bit different because this is called Coffee with a Cop. So John's here to explain this new program.
Primarily what it is, is a simplistic program. It's right now going on in 24 states throughout the United States. A couple of programs have started within the state of New Jersey. We will be kicking off our first one on December 17th, between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. at Panera Bread. What we're looking to do over the next three to four months is try to hit one, just one place in each of the zones within the township. So we're going to be looking hopefully to do at Whole Foods, and also at the Dunkin' Donuts down on the bottom of the hill here. And then we're looking for another location in Zone 1 at this point. The idea behind it is, is we kind of break the barriers down between the police and the community, allow them to come and just have a cup of coffee and talk with us. It could be about anything. Could be about what we do as a profession, what we, what they expect from us. It could be what's going on in the town. So it's just a simple dialogue between the community and local police officers.
Kind of made the analogy between the neighborhood watch group, but that's usually reactive, but you know, that you have meetings, a police officer comes out and talks about protocols. This is a little different. This is just...
This is just to get out there in short phases and talk to the community.
Talk to the community. So any concerns, any issues?
That's it.
Can you talk about the zones, though? We had talked about the different Zone 1, the four zones.
Yeah, there's, there's four zones within the town. You have the valley area, which is considered Zone 1. The, the area down in this area is considered Zone 2. Once you get up towards like the Kmart Plaza and all that, that whole area up there is Zone 4. And then the Essex Green area and off, off to the, the east from there is going to be Zone 3.
Okay.
So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get into each area of town.
Make it more convenient for people to get there.
Exactly. So people from that, that community where they feel comfortable, maybe to come out and just have a discussion.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I mean, anybody have any questions about it or any concerns?
How is it going to be advertised to the public?
Uh, we've already gave that to Jess. She's going to put it out electronically. We're also going to put signs up at the facilities itself, and we'll have probably signs up here at Town Hall and at the police station.
Might be a good idea to put signs in businesses within the zone that you're...
We'll probably end up doing that also. I mean, wherever we're going to be during that time, we'll strategically place them where people can see them. What we're looking for is places with large foot traffic. We don't want to go to an area to where, you know, they may get maybe five or six people in the morning. That's why we're looking for the larger establishments.
But it's going to be more like a session where everyone will hear the different questions or not just standing online and waiting?
It's, they, we're just going to leave it open. It's going to be fluid. I mean, we're going to have probably three or four guys up there, and what we'll do is just have an open dialogue with whoever wishes to talk with us.
Breakout, breakout. Focus groups.
Anybody else?
Any questions?
Will you be bringing things back to the council?
Oh, good question.
About items that you're covering or concerns that the residents have when you have these needs?
If you would like that, we can do that. It's not a problem.
Sure, like almost minutes of...
Yeah, I can, I can jot down some notes and send it an email.
No, I think it's really, really helpful. It'd be very good that, that occurs because then we'll know what the community's thinking, and you're an extra arm of the council and the community.
Right.
So it's great. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Got it?
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. And our next presentation is our Downtown Alliance. We have John McElroy, Chairman, and Megan Brill, Executive Director, with lots of things.
My name is John McElroy, Chairman of the Downtown West Orange Alliance. My little part here will be about Shop Small. It's a program sponsored by American Express. We particularly like it because it's what we try to do all year long. Get business, get people to come down to the small businesses in town, Main Street Corridor and other parts of the town to, they, they pick a day, right after Black Friday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And it's an incredible amount of national advertising on Shop Small. It fit, it fit for us perfectly. We have now, I think we're up to 25 participating businesses that will be displaying all the Shop Small logos, bags, welcome mats, all supplied by American Express, which is, I just, I, you know, the advertising alone is worth so much money. It's on TV every night. I mean, you can see it everywhere. So it was a no-brainer for the Alliance to get on board with that and to encourage that. And we're happy to see other businesses around the town, not just in our corridor participating. And we encourage everyone to come out and shop with small business on Saturday. There's a lot of good offers. Where can they see it? Is it on the, the town's?
Yes.
Website?
It's on the town website.
WestOrange.org?
It'll be on the Alternative Press page and on the Chronicle.
It'll show all the participating vendors and there are some special offers. My business, I have a masseuse for four hours coming in. We have a lot of giveaways, because, you know, I sell auto repairs. I'm not going to be selling all that on a Saturday morning. So we're doing tours of the facility. We're just talking to the people that come in, hoping to pick up some new customers. And we have a light lunch, some sandwiches, and a raffle going. No, Jerry, you can't come. So, and other businesses are, you know, doing different things to encourage people to come in. So, you know, I'd be happy to meet some new people and maybe get a couple of new customers out of it. So I think it's a great thing, and I encourage as many people as possible to come down and shop small.
I only have one other thing to add, that when we were putting together the publicity sheet for, that was going out to the Chronicle and the Alternative Press, we sent a note out to the entire township. So there's five or six businesses that aren't in the corridor that we were able to advertise on their behalf as well. So we tried to really, I'll make it a whole town event. When you go shopping at these businesses and a few others, if you go on the website, you'll see them, you should get bags and pins and stuff from them about Shop Small. So it's, it's Saturday, the 29th, the day after Black Friday. Okay. So that is...
And you have a list on your own behalf here.
Okay. The, the second thing we have to talk about is the Holiday Open House, which is, I blew up all the flyers. Let me cut them all there, too. We're doing the Traditional Breakfast with Santa. This year, on the Greg Boiles Church, Unconditional Love Christian Fellowship Church, they are sponsoring the breakfast, and it's going to be at Lord's, same time, same place. We shortened it a little bit. We're going to have pictures with Santa there. We have our fabulous new Santa, which is great. So that is $10 a family. So everybody can come. We'd like to know you're coming. There's a registration. You can call, you can email, you can go online and just say that you're coming, and we'll expect you. The second thing that we're doing, which is a new thing, is the Holiday Bazaar. It's at the Community House, and it's one of our residents, Cherie Harrison, who helped me out with the farmer's market this year and is a fabulous volunteer. So she orchestrated this whole bazaar, which will be in the gym at the Community House. We have over 30 vendors coming, all food, crafts, not the food that you can eat right there, like specialty foods, like granola and gift, gift products and stuff that you can use for the holidays as gifts and, and that. There's going to be tons of kids' activities that day, and Santa will be there as well. That starts at 10:00 and goes to 4:00. The third thing that we're doing is the Hallytrolley Ride. We expanded the tour this year. We're going to still be at the Community House for a pickup, and we're going to travel down Main Street in Silver Island Park. Terry Jung, who's the fabulous ranger from, she's actually the Assistant Superintendent from the museum, she agreed to do all five hours with us, so we get her the whole time. And she's fabulous, knows everything about the park and the museum. So she's going to get, be on the tour with us. Then we're going to come out of the park, go down Main Street, and Joe Fagan is going to talk about the Eagle Rock Hill Climb. And we have our very own Model T that we just acquired. It's a prop that we got from Pleasant Valley Productions, and are very excited. John and Rick have to build it a little bit, but it's going to be great. It'll be at Lord's, and that is the site of the first hill climb. So we've expanded that. We welcome council's input on being on one of the tours. The tour's going to be about 45 minutes this time. So we're running five tours, and again, we're asking for reservations, just to know that there's only about 40 seats on each trolley. And last year, we had like 300 people. So again, it's on all this stuff. You can just put that stuff down. Oh, okay. That's good. He knows what he's doing. So, right. So the trolley rides should, should be interesting this year. The, the Pictures with Santa will be at the trolley, at the bazaar, and at Pictures with, and at Breakfast with Santa. And there's flyers about all of those things in there, and all the information is on the town website. The last thing that we have to talk about is December 11th. This has been probably in the planning for most of this year, and it's our strategic planning meeting. So this is the first step in our SWOT analysis, that actually John Gross talked to me about like a year ago. And we, it, we scheduled it. There's an invitation. It's the envelope that you all have, and I gave you two blank envelopes that please give to residents and people that you know that you want to come to this meeting. The meeting is December 11th. It's Thursday night, 5:30 to 9:30. We promised we'll get out of, get out of there by 9:30, and it's at the Marriott by the Manor. Okay? So it's off-site. Our whole board is committed to come. We, I plan to invite 75 of our closest friends. Hopefully, not our closest friends. The point of this analysis really is to get, you know, I know what a lot of you think. We want to know what everyone else thinks, and whatever, whatever everyone else believes are the strengths and the weaknesses of, you know, the downtown corridor. So that is a very big meeting, and we appreciate all of your attendance at that meeting. Is there anything else? I thought you were right here. Are there any questions? Hope to see you on... I'm going to send the email tomorrow to let you know what your schedules are, if you can come and do the trolley ride.
Well, I'm just reading the letter that you mentioned, and it says that this is more like a seminar. So, and it's going to be facilitated by Donna Ann Harris of the Heritage Consulting.
Yeah. Donna Harris is a consultant. Now, because we're a Main Street community, we get the advantage of using their services for free. So Main Street, New Jersey pays for her to come and facilitate this meeting. She's actually committed to spend the next six months with us, and this is the first part of that meeting. Once we break out into small groups at that meeting, then we'll begin to create our strategic plan that will guide the goals of the Downtown Alliance for the next five years. So it's pretty exciting.
So is this also like forming partnerships that you're looking for, say, chamber input or the Edison Museum input, and all of the partnerships to create?
Well, that's definitely one of our strengths, and we've tried very hard. Actually, the museum is in the Shop Small. A day, they're giving a 15% off of their Glenmont Christmas ornament. So yeah, we, we believe that the partnership with all of those organizations is very important, and all of, all of our board members are committed in different ways to support those organizations. It's definitely key. Yeah. Our website? We're working on it. Yeah, actually, there's a problem with the, our mainframe, so now I don't even have access to the Downtown Alliance's website. So everything's on the township website. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. That was a lot of information. Are you going to back up and start on Friday instead of Saturday? Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if Megan was going to talk about it. So I just wanted to remind everyone that on Friday, December 5th, at 4:00 p.m. at Town, oh, yeah, at Town Hall, we're going to have our annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony. It's great. Every year, we have more and more people show up. We have a petting zoo, and there's going to be band and dance performances. They're going to have hot chocolate and cookies, and pictures with Santa. Santa's going to arrive, and all the kids have all the time in the world to take pictures with him. You could see the full schedule of events on our website at westorange dot, uh, westorange... What is it?
That'll...
WestOrange.org. That didn't sound very good. And just one last reminder is our Facebook page. Everything that's going on in this town is going to be on our Facebook page in real time, and that's facebook.com/westorangeinfo. Yeah, yes.
Jessica, can you give us those dates again? The Hanukkah lighting?
Oh, sure. Okay. So Christmas tree lighting is Friday, December 5th, 4:00 p.m., Town Hall. Then you have all of your activities on Saturday, December 6th, that Megan just went through. On Thursday, December 18th, from 6:30 to 9:00, is the annual Kwanzaa celebration. That's Washington Elementary School. And then Monday, December 22nd, at 3:45 at Town Hall, is the Hanukkah menorah lighting. Oh, I'm sorry. 3:45 at Town Hall. Everyone got that in your calendars? See you there.
So thank you. I said that was a lot of information, and I'm looking at the list now of the Small Business Saturday, which is November 29th, and just some of the good incentives here. John mentioned free lunch and a massage. Sounds good. Advantage Pest Control will have their mice racing and free gummy worms. The Nation of Pollen, this is at 539 Northfield Avenue. This is an event planner. 20% off their floral and gift, gift baskets. Great deal. Family Pharmacy, buy one, get one vitamins and candies. Sweet Style Salon, 25% off all of their services. Purchase Possessions, 10% off. Starlight Pizza, one free pizza topping. Oak Barrel Pub, Giraffe Beer Specials. Goodfellas Pizza, a pizza special. Close Mine on the corner of Valley Road and Swain. $5 and $10 Saturday specials. Bagel Box, one dozen bagels for only $5. Megan mentioned the Museum Store at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park, 15% off the Glenmont ornament. Pink Cupcakes, cupcake specials all day long. Supreme Bakery, free cookies. Poorhouse, Pub and Grub, free pizza all day long. Schneider Hardware, $5 off any purchase. $20 or more, a 15% off your total. SC International Market has free delicious coffee. Lila's Caribbean, special menu samples. Macato's Tailor, free bag of candy. Jerry's Artist Gallery, free set of colored pencils. Athena's Greek Kitchen, two for $20 menu specials. Express Stew Repair, Orange Egg Cleaners, The Deli Guy, CBL Fine Art on Pleasant Valley Way. So we're extending all over town. Sounds great. Thank you. The list is still expanding, I see. Anything else? Any comments, questions?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Yeah. I severed the tendon in my quarters.
This happened at our last council meeting. We skipped over a council liaison announcements. If anyone does have any announcements to make, pretty much all of your Downtown Alliance announcements were made. Councilwoman Spango?
Yeah, we had a meeting with the Rent a House on, I believe, last Monday. And just to update, it looks like finally they're going to close to refinance, going to get a bridge loan, and then everything is in place for approval. So it looks like they're moving forward with the refinancing.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have one thing about the council calendar for next year.
Oh, good. I have that on mine.
I sent out an email for two changes, and I just wanted to make sure everyone got it, and it was okay with them.
I'll tell you what they were. It, we're changing the June 30th meeting to moving it up to June 23rd, and on, in September, the September 1st meeting, moving it to the following week, September 8th, because that would be right on the Labor Day weekend.
That's okay.
We have the Chamber Luncheon at Mayfair Farms. Nobody's going to know this. Tomorrow, day before Thanksgiving, November 26th, at noon at Mayfair Farms. Tickets are $40 if anyone would like a ticket. Let me know. I have some here. The next planning board meeting is Wednesday, oh, not September, December 3rd. We have AutoZone being carried over since July. Planning to be heard. AutoZone is thinking of their application is for 7 Main Street. We did have on our agenda the Lions Club. I was asked to speak for the, to the, at the Lions Club luncheon last week, and just this kind of secret society that the Lions Club for over 60 years have been donating to eye care and donating glasses. So I would like to start, they'll be here soon in December to talk about a new campaign about donating eyeglasses to, for those in need. So I'm looking for businesses or places such as Town Hall to set up boxes where people can recycle their eyeglasses. I'll talk more about that. Public comment?
I'm sorry, John, did you have a...
Sorry. Victor? Nope. Okay. Public comment?
Good evening. Claire Silvestri, 20 Greenview Avenue. I, I just wanted residents to know that for the 10th straight year, the West Orange Girl Scouts are collecting coats for the Jersey Cares Coat Drive. Town residents can donate new or gently-used coats of any size and style through December 15th. And we'll have Girl Scout troops in most of the schools doing, running collection drives. If you don't get a, find out information from your school, we do. I know that my troop is, has bins at St. Joseph's Church in, in the school lobby of the old Blessed Pope John, that you can drop off coats Saturday and Sunday mornings and all day, all day Monday, as well as a bin in the vestibule of the Lady of Lords Church, that you can drop by coats there anytime during the week. And the Girl Scouts will then collect all the coats and distribute, and sort them and bring them to Jersey Cares, who will distribute them to those in need. And in, since 2006, West Orange Girl Scouts have collected well over 2,000 coats for those people in need. So we ask residents to, to please be aware and, and if they have any coats, to donate them. And, and also, just on a separate note, I had driven by West Orange High School this weekend, and I saw that there were, there was construction equipment near the baseball field, and it appeared that work may have started on the bleacher project. But I don't recall the council having approved a construction bid, so I was just wondering what the status was and why the work had started already. Okay?
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Mark Meyer. It's 19 Howell Drive. I know in January, council gets reorganized, and I'm hoping there will be a new council president. I'm here to suggest that Councilman Kokoviac be named council president. I believe that last year, he was somehow passed over, and we wouldn't want the same thing to happen again this year. And on a different note, surprise, surprise, I checked to see whether Prism has paid any of their taxes, and lo and behold, they still have not paid any taxes, and they are now over $1 million in arrears on their property taxes. And the township has set up a reserve fund of $2.8 million to cover unpaid property taxes. So if you deduct that $1 million out of the 2.8, that leaves just 1.8 million... So, if you deduct that $1 million out of the 2.8, that leaves just $1.8 million for all the other property taxpayers who are struggling in town, which may not be enough. So, once again, I'm here to say, this council needs to send a default letter immediately, and the mayor needs to send a default letter immediately to PRISM to get them to start paying their taxes. I mean, it really is not right that they should not pay their taxes, and everybody else in town is paying their taxes. What I'm really concerned about, and what other people are concerned about, is that PRISM is using this as a negotiating tactic. They're going to run up as big, as huge an amount as possible in arrears, and then start negotiating a steep discount from the town. You know, they've done things like that before, from what I've heard. And I would say that this would be really abhorrent to a lot of people in town if the township were to accept a deep-discount deal from PRISM. So, you have to know that the citizens of West Orange will not be amenable to PRISM getting any special treatment, any kind of special discount, that they cannot use a tactic to negotiate like they negotiate with the banks, because if they get a discount, the rest of us want a discount off of our taxes. So, it really would be the best thing for the administration to go out right now, collect the taxes, or get them to start paying their taxes, because you don't want a bigger problem down the road. So, my question for you tonight is, would you, as council people, approve if the administration or if you negotiated a big discount for PRISM in order to collect something? As they say, you know, your mics come back and say, "Well, something is better than nothing." But in this case, I think, you know, would you approve something like that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Evening, Arthur Gordon, 3 Garfield Avenue in West Orange. And I think in keeping with the holiday coming up, I'd like to, number one, say thanks to all of your honor council for your work on a continuing basis, and it's much appreciated. Different people, different ways. But I would also like to echo Mark Meyer with his comment about the rotating seat of president. I have been around long enough, involved in meetings, to be aware of how it works. But if it works as I just heard, I would hope that Councilman Krokoviek's name would be definitely included in the selection or the thought for that office. Thank you very much. Again, healthy, happy holidays.
Can you repeat your name for me? Your name?
Arthur Gordon. Thank you. Any other comments? I always want to yell out Anthony. On Tuesdays.
Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Obviously, there's a lot going on in West Orange, and I just want to fill up everyone's social calendar for the next couple of weeks. So, I'll start with our Holiday Light Spectacular, which begins this Friday at Turtleback Zoo and continues until January 4th. It's from 5:00 to 9:00. On most nights, the first two weeks, we're only open on the weekends. And we do ask people who do come, if they can bring donations of non-perishable food, gently-used winter coats. I don't want to compete with the Girl Scouts, but it's all for a good cause. And also unwrapped toys. All of these go to organizations that help the less fortunate. So, that's at Turtleback Zoo. At our Environmental Center, we have our Holiday Habitat and Holiday Gingerbread House and Habitats Contest. That's a mouthful. You need to register by December 6th, and you need to either drop off your entry on December 6th or December 8th at the latest. It'll be on display from December 10th to the 19th at the Environmental Center in Roseland. We do have, we do select winners in a number of categories. It's a free contest, and although everything looks really great to eat, it's very great to see how people incorporate their creativity and learn about the environment and nature as well. And then finally, at Kip's Castle, we have a number of things. We have candlelight tours that happen on December 4th, 11th, and 18th. There are limited spots, so if you do call for reservations ahead of time, it's (973) And then also, at Kip's Castle through December 31st, during operating hours, Wednesday to Saturday, there is a, the first floor is decorated circa 1928. And then also, December 6th and 7th, the castle along with the Edison site is part of the annual Essex County Holiday Historic House Tour. Each, there's 16 locations on that tour. Each site has different times, and some do charge a fee. But if you want to take a look back into Essex County's history, it's a great opportunity to see some unique sites. All of this is on our website, which is essexcountyNJ.org, and we look forward to seeing everybody there.
Two things. One, just give us the address of Kip's Castle, if you have that.
It's 22 Crestmont Drive in Verona.
And the telephone number again for reservations?
Thank you.
Thanks. Happy Thanksgiving, Anthony.
You too.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of our meeting. Thank everyone. Claire, thank you for your continued work on the coat drives. And I guess, Mark, there's no plan, and we have no intention of offering any kind of discounts to PRISM. And I think we have said this numerous times, they have till the end of the year. If they don't pay by the end of the year, then we will issue a default letter. But they have till the end of the year. That would be the procedure. I don't know anything about the West Orange High School construction. I guess we can find out. Do I have any other comments? Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah, Mr. Meyerowitz's point, he asked whether the rest of us should get a discount on property taxes. There is a system in place, and that's the tax appeal process. So, you know, in a way, yeah, you know, every resident and commercial establishment can't register a tax appeal, and that's decided by a tax court. And should that entity seek that route, I mean, it's really up to the tax court. We really have no say in that. But if you're asking like independently negotiate, I wouldn't support that personally. So, that's the answer to that. And yeah, thank you all for coming up and expressing your points, and I look forward to, well, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I look forward to seeing everyone during the holidays. We have so many events. Visit the website. Jessica just talked about it, westorange.org, and you'll just see a list of so many wonderful, wonderful festivities. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Also, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Enjoy, enjoy the special time with your family. Also, want to reiterate, like Councilman Cirillo said, and Council President McCartney said, there are so many events going on, coming up with our Holiday Open House and Learn the History of West Orange. It's a great time. Come on down to Main Street, visit Main Street, and of course, support our small businesses on Small Business Saturday. It's a great thing. And Mr. McElroy, I thank you for your input into it and your drive for it. It's something that we've needed for a long time. So, thank you, and thank you, Megan. With the council president's permission, I want to make a comment about the, as a liaison, especially with the Pleasant Valley Traffic and Safety Commission. I was asked to spearhead the Pleasant Valley Way Traffic and Safety Commission to see what we can do on making Pleasant Valley Way as a roadway a more pedestrian-friendly, driver-friendly, and try to prevent the number of accidents that are happening on Pleasant Valley Way. We had a great meeting, and thank you to the county for the use of the educational center at Turtleback Zoo. We had over 25 people there, members of the county government, municipal government, professional traffic and safety engineers, and concerned residents who feel that there is things that we can do as a municipality, along with the county government and possibly state government, on making Pleasant Valley Way a safer and a more pedestrian-friendly venue. Our next meeting is scheduled, and we will give updates. It's to the meeting of when it will be, definitely. The same members are coming back with jobs that they were given, assignments that they were given, to walk Pleasant Valley Way, point out specific areas. It was really well-attended, a lot of enthusiasm. It wasn't a finger-pointing meeting. It was actually a productive sit-down meeting where a lot of constructive things were put together, and hopefully, within a number of ti, it's not going to take today or tomorrow. It's going to take a while. But eventually, we'll get the direction and work with the county and the township administration. So, I just want everybody to know about that. It's something that we're not just talking about. It's an actual working committee. So, thank you, Council President. And Councilwoman, President McCartney was there, and a number of people. So, everybody is interested, and if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Good point. Great. Thanks. And the county has already done so many things by putting up the speed box already. I just noticed this morning that it's already been moved to a new location, so they are checking speed. Do you have more to add to that? I know that we're doing basically a walking tour to look at sidewalks, because there are schools and temples on Pleasant Valley Way.
One of the issues was whether we could expand the yellow light linking lights for the school zone, which Mr. Lapore is undertaking that right now. And the other issue that I, the councilman, I'm not sure whether it was discussed at that meeting. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend that meeting. I had to be somewhere else. We have got together with the New Jersey Planning Association, and they have a program where they come in and they will actually do the study for the street.
It's been better.
So, we're in the process of putting that together, and if we partner with the township, I think it's a $1,000 cost, so it would be $500 for the town, $500 for the county, and they do the study for free. And then they would give it to us, and we would be able to move ahead and see what issues that we would need to address.
Well, that's good news.
So, that's also in progress. We have our planner, Mr. Greigle, meeting with them and putting that whole program together.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep.
If I could just say one more thing, Council President. What this whole meeting was about is to make sure that nobody was stepping on anybody else's toes or doing something that's already been put in the works. It is put there so everybody talks to one another, and we get an input from each department, from both the township administration and county administration, so nobody's doing duplicate efforts. And it was a very, very good, productive meeting. I was very, very happy. Everybody who was there was very happy, so. And we also have a walking tour on Friday morning, 11 o'clock, on Pleasant Valley Way, to walk and see the sidewalks, the curbs, and safety issues, and we'll put together part of our report. Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Mr. Sares.
And a lot of this information, though, the town has, the planning board did adopt a complete streets policy, and the county also has a complete streets policy. So, these are things that we're looking at just for public safety and on how to proceed. There was an admission at that meeting that Pleasant Valley Way hasn't been looked at in over 20 years, and there has been a lot of growth on Pleasant Valley Way. And again, two schools that face each other, and I think five temples right on Pleasant Valley Way. So, there's a lot, and quite a few businesses. So, there's a lot of walking and a lot of activity, so we do want to concentrate on public safety. Very productive. And I want to say add too, Jerry said that there was help from the community. We have Lee Klein is a traffic engineer, and I serve with Lee on the planning board. So, here he is volunteering his time in two ways. And also Mike Danna Miller, Pleasant Dale Dad, volunteering his time and also a traffic engineer. So, professionals that are weighing in to help in the process. Madam Clerk? Where are we? Consent agenda? Any other comments?
If I could, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that Mr. Meyerowitz raised about the PRISM tax delinquency, and I would not be in favor of any sort of, providing them any sort of discount on their delinquent property taxes. But it does raise a couple of questions on my mind that I'd like to just ask the administration about. Given that this is a $1 million delinquency that's taken place so far this year, has this made any sort of impact on our cash flow or our, how we're accounting for this reserve from having such a large tax delinquency? Have we had to borrow more money for the cash or anything like that?
No, we have not.
My other question, and I don't, I'm hoping the administration knows about this. I recall that the, that PRISM was able to obtain an amendment, amended approval to their plan from, I think, believe, the planning board, and they had two years from that approval in order to move forward, and it would have, I don't know the exact date, but it would have, this would have been about the time that it would have expired. Is there any issue with that, that the administration is pursuing or is aware of?
I'm not aware of that. I mean, I know that there was an amendment to the plan, but what I can tell you are three things. A, to answer Mr. Meyerowitz's question, there's no way a town could ever excuse someone's taxes. It's illegal to do that. The only way that could happen, Mr. Cirillo was absolutely correct, is if you do a tax appeal. However, you can't file a tax appeal unless your taxes are paid up to date. So, PRISM is out on all three boxes. I can tell you that we've had some discussions with our attorneys on what our next move is going to be, and I'm hoping possibly by tomorrow to have an answer to that question. I don't have that answer yet, but we are moving to make sure that those taxes get paid by the end of the year.
So, I wanted to make sure that I understood correctly when Council President had said if they don't pay the taxes by the end of the year, that they, that...
Well, here's the way, here's the way the default agreement works. If, in fact, we're talking about a couple of things, accelerated tax sales, possibly the default. If we enter into a default agree, not agreement, but if we send out a default letter, what happens is, I believe they have 30 days to pay their taxes. I'm pretty sure. So, from the date they get the letter, they have 30 days to pay the taxes, which would put them pretty close to the end of the month, the end of December. If they don't pay the taxes within those 30 days, then the township can withdraw all their approvals. So, then they, they no longer have any approvals to be redevelopers. Now, what does that mean? I mean, we've had a lot of discussions over the last six months that I really didn't want to get into the middle of until we were sure of what position we were going to take. The issue still remains that they're going to own the property. Even if we default them on the agreement, they still own those properties. So, then the next issue would be is whether we put them in an accelerated tax sale and try and get the properties. So, those are the two things that we've been discussing over the last couple of days with our legal staff, and I'm hoping to have an answer to that by tomorrow.
So, there is the potential for us to issue a default letter that would then remove their designation as the redeveloper?
Absolutely.
As someone who's been calling for that for many months, I'm happy to, I'm happy to hear that because of the non-performance by the vendor. So, please keep the capital aggressive.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll keep you guys apprised.
Yes.
Without a doubt.
Okay, thank you. I also, Ms. Silvestri raised the issue about the bleacher project. Obviously, she and I are married, and I had mentioned to her that I had reached out to Mr. Lapore, the town engineer, about the project, and he has sent me material, not all of which I've reviewed. Just as background, this is the project that we've scheduled $60,000 in the capital budget to improve the sightline of the Third Blaze bleachers on the high school baseball field. And we've already committed to spend $10,800 for engineering and survey. And Mr. Lapore sent me an email yesterday that said that he had solicited proposals for the construction portion, which I assume is to build the retaining wall. For those of you who are not familiar with the geography there, the high school baseball field is about 30 to 40 feet higher than the tennis courts there at the high school, and so the retaining wall has to be built so that we can build a bigger foundation to put higher bleachers there. And he had said that he had solicited proposal for construction that had come in $1,000 less than the maximum that's allowed for most bid projects without going into competitive bidding. Do I have that correct, Mr.?
Yes. If it's $36,000 or higher, requires competitive bidding.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gross. I just blanked on your last name. I don't know why that happened. I'm sorry. And he has sent me some additional material today that I haven't gotten to. And so, I'll try to provide an update at our next council meeting. And I appreciate the comments from people about the council presidency. I'd be happy to serve. I'm the senior-most person on the council who has not held that position, and I'm hopeful that my colleagues will see me as fit to take that role into the new year. So, thank you.
Yes, Council.
I don't think there's much to add, Ms. Silvestri. I do not know anything about the construction at the high school. Mark, I would, even though Jack said we couldn't do it, I would not be in favor of that because everyone knows I've been there. So, I'd be right in line for my discount if they got one. The only comment I'd like to make that wasn't said tonight, and I will ask Council President McCartney, who is our senior member and completing her 12th year here. There were several comments made about council president and how Councilman Krokoviac was skipped over. It's not a rotating basis. And this is not whether or not Councilman Krokoviac should be president or not, but it's not a rotating basis. You need the votes of your colleague, just like you do to become senate president. You need the votes of your colleagues to become council president. So, it's not that anybody was skipped over on a rotating basis. And correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman McCartney.
No, absolutely.
That's the procedure. So, no one is entitled to it, not me, not anyone up here, unless you get the votes of your colleagues. That's how it works. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting October 21st and November 10th, 2014.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Planning board recommendations to council regarding proposed changes to site plan and technical review procedures.
Okay. I just want to make comment on this. This has been a year-long progress, process from the planning board. So, this, when I first got elected, you just reminded everyone, it was 12 years ago. When I first got elected, I did want to put in place a technical review process to kind of hand-hold, to help businesses or residents with their applications to come to the planning department, just to go over the checklist, to know, to make sure that their application was complete before they actually brought all their professionals here to be heard. So, this has been a year-long process. That, the technical review process has been in place for many years, but it mushroomed. It mushroomed into something that was not the intent. And now, it's taking longer for applicants. It's becoming more costly for applicant, and that was not the original intent. So, what the planning board is making recommendations, along with the acting planner who has reviewed this, our zoning officer, and also the building inspector has weighed in. This would be to amend the technical review so that it is more consistent with the municipal land use law that other municipalities do have in place. Actually, the wording is right here. It says to promote efficiency for both the township and the applicants, to create a site plan review advisory board, provide better definitions for those matters which are subject to site plan review, and eliminate unnecessary steps for those applicants not needing a site plan approval. So, this is a recommendation by the planning board to come before the council. Just wanted to explain.
Okay. Bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions. Are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Spango, any resolutions?
I'm okay.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I don't, I'm not looking to pull anything, but I did have a couple of questions about two of the resolutions having to do with, we have two different resolutions to spend a little over $120,000 for three police vehicles. And I'm just trying to understand why we need these specific vehicles, all of which have three rows of seats seating nine people. And I'm just trying to get a better idea of what the purpose is of the police, if I could. It just seems like...
I was pulling it, I was pulling Resolution G to ask the same question.
Well, we can, we can just do that then.
Let's pull it.
That's all I have.
All right. Councilman?
Which resolution is being pulled?
Resolution G 210-14. This is a resolution purchase of the GMC Yukon.
There's also Agenda Item A, Resolution 204.
Of the state contract.
Which is also the other two police vehicles. Why don't we just pull them both? Because they'll probably be both answering the same answers.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. With the exception of Resolution A and G, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is implemented.
So, I did ask to pull these, the Resolution G in particular, only because with the sustainable jersey application, we worked, Glenn McCarthy worked many hours putting together green fleet inventory. So, this NA also just seems like we're going to the extreme on the size of the vehicle and also the cost. I know that we do have a lot of Explorers, and we do have hybrids. And I know that there's always been an argument about the hills and the terrain and the weather. I understand that. But Explorers are a whole lot less, and I don't think that we have had any trouble with the Explorers. And I don't know, I knew that, I know that there is something about flex fuel, but I don't know that we are, since we've done, since we've done the green inventory, I don't know, I don't know that we are using flex fuel to even save on...
No. Those vehicles are much more than these vehicles, by the way. Just so you know that, number one. In the long run, the argument is you save money on fuel, and that's a possibility. I don't think that is a proven fact at this point. Second of all, as I've always discussed, we have a tough terrain in this town, and when we buy vehicles, even when we buy DPW vehicles or fire trucks, we have to buy heavier-equipped vehicles because when it snows and when we have bad weather, it's very difficult to traverse the town. Now, in most, when you talk about the Ford Explorers, every year, when you go into state contract, or, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm saying anything that I'm, that's wrong, they decide basically what the vehicles are. It's not like, like this year, they may not be Ford Explorers. Like, when we had the police interceptors, the vehicles, they were the police vehicles that every contractor and every dealership you went to, you had to purchase. And you purchased them as police vehicles. They were the worst vehicles in the world. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that it's a good or a bad thing, but they're terrible in the snow. I mean, we had every vehicle that we had as a police interceptor, we had to buy change for just to drive around in the snow. So, we have now gone to four-wheel-drive vehicles because they're much more efficient during emergency services, especially during snowstorms. And people may say, oh, well, it only snows X amount of time. Problem is, is that the way these storms have been coming the last couple of winters, it's very difficult. Just look what's just happened in Buffalo. It's very difficult to get to people and to get, to do things that you need to do. So, that's why we're purchasing these vehicles. I leave these vehicles up to whoever the director of department heads are, as long as we can purchase them under state contract. And the G vehicle is being purchased under the SS County Cooperative Agreement. These are the three vehicles we're requesting to purchase. Two of the vehicle, the one vehicle will be assigned to the detective bureau. The other vehicle will be assigned to the patrol division. And the third vehicle will be assigned to the chief's office. So, that's where the vehicles will be. And what we try to do every year with, as I said, with our construction code department, because Mr. Tracy gets funded by the state to purchase a vehicle every year, we try to pass down one of those four-wheel-drives to the police department and put those in the patrol division also. And what you should also know is that two of these vehicles are being purchased with forfeiture funds, so that's not costing us anything.
That was A, right? The A, the two?
Right. The two Tahos are being purchased out of forfeiture funds. And one of the reasons we had pulled this, I know Councilman Krokoviac had a question about that, was we were trying to figure out how we could do the third vehicle, but unfortunately, we cannot. So, that's going to be purchased out of our capital budget, which was already approved for the vehicle back in the beginning of 2014. So, all we're doing now is purchasing.
Council President.
Councilwoman Spango.
Jack, just to add what you're saying, I believe the sheriff's department also uses the, these Yukons.
Well, everybody uses them.
I mean, that's what you see a lot of the Yukons with the sheriff's department.
Most, most, the way it works, it's hard to explain it, but the way it works is every year, they come out with a different vehicle that's going to be a police vehicle. And then all the vendors that you go to purchase them from, that's what you purchase.
And they leave you no choice?
Now, you could purchase...
But they leave you no choice? This is with the state contract?
No, no. Let me get to that. You can purchase an Explorer, but then you've got to go out and get it all equipped as a police vehicle. Where these vehicles come in, they're pre-made to be police vehicles, and all you have to do is add lights and sirens, and then you can hook up your computers and your MDTs and everything else that goes into the system. That's, I'm not saying we have to buy them, we don't have to buy them, but we feel it's the best way to go. And we're going to support that.
Mr. Sayers, Jack, can I say something?
Of course.
You know what? You make some great points as to the need and the reasons why we have these modifications, these types of vehicles, especially for our terrain. I don't have a problem with that. But what I just want to make sure is that they're being used to effectively perform a public service in town, and they're not being used for other improper reasons, you know, patrol, you know...
You make, you think we're going to use...
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that, you know, we're comparing it to the sheriff's office, you know? Like, the sheriff's office is not patrolling West Orange, you know?
Yes, they do. Absolutely do.
Okay, so they drive up and down our roads, you know?
They patrol county roads in West Orange.
County roads, but not the interior roads, which are worse, they're worse pitches and angles than what we have. I'm supporting you. I'm with you. But what I'm saying is, we have to make sure that they're being used for effective public, you know, public safety. And I believe we are. And especially because they're being used for forfeiture funds. Now, the question I have is, the release of the forfeiture funds, is that a grant program?
No. What happens is, is when...
How does that work?
We have, we have special task forces that we use for undercover narcotics operations. And we also have an officer from our department who's assigned to the DEA who works with them. And whenever there's a major drug bust that are done, and there's money that's confiscated, it gets split up with all the departments who are involved. So, if there was $100,000 and there were four departments involved, each department would get $25,000 of the confiscated money. So, that's what forfeiture funds are.
Right. But this is a federal program. Is it the same thing?
Well, it works, it works both ways. I mean, if our, if our task force confiscates money, then it's all, it's all, all the money comes to us. If we're on a federal task force like the DEA, whatever departments are funding or are participating is that part of that task force, then the money gets split up between everybody. But if we do it ourselves, in other words, if we went to West Orange and we did a drug bust and found $100,000, we get the, we get the money. Unless there's another department that participated with helping us do that.
Now, is this like the cap for the year, or do we still have more access?
No, it's whenever you, whenever you confiscate the money, it goes into a specific fund.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is there, is there an ability...
No, it's not, you can't tell what the amount is because it depends on what busts you make.
Okay.
So, if you get busted for $100,000, and he gets busted for $25,000, and she gets busted for $25,000...
So, it varies. So, this meets our threshold for the fiscal year or for the county?
There's no threshold. There is no threshold for the fiscal. If we make a bust tomorrow and we confiscate $100,000...
You can buy more vehicles.
We get another $100,000.
Right.
That's how it works. So, there is, though, it depends on how you're working and what you're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President.
Councilwoman Spango.
Councilman, I just made mention of the sheriff's office using these cards in reference to what Jack was saying, is they pick certain model cars. And if you look, you see a lot of Yukons being used by the county.
You'll see probably most departments in the county are purchasing those vehicles.
But some of them are being used for administrative purposes.
That's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that they're all patrolling in the streets. That's my point.
Yeah, two...
Those are the Tahos.
Because, believe me, I see them all over the state, people in administrative offices driving these vehicles that do not patrol, okay? So, that was my point. And I'm not saying that we do that. I'm just saying that we have to make sure that we effectively are spending money for public service, and we are. And I support your proposal.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sayers, just a quick question. I noticed that the cost of the one Tahoe on Item G is $51,000. What would the normal cost of that, without going through the county cooperative? I'm just asking a question for savings.
It would be much more, I don't know the answer to that question, but it would be much more than $51,000.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve 204-14?
So moved.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes, on A.
G?
And...
210-14. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
No.
Did you say no?
I said no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 2429-14 is an ordinance amending Chapter 7, traffic, parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance, night parking restricted. This would be on Carey Street. I make a motion to introduce on second and final reading.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any discussion? Any comments on Ordinance 2431-14? Seeing none? I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2431-14 for stop signs at James Court and Allen Street, Mountain Drive, and Highwood Road.
Second. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. This ordinance is being reintroduced because of, it needed to be advertised.
Right.
Any comments on this ordinance? 2429-14 on Carey Street. Seeing none, I make a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?[1644.15] Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Ordinance 243014 is another traffic, Chapter 7 traffic through streets. This would be on Lincoln Avenue. I make a motion to introduce ordinance 2430-14 on second and final reading.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments on Lincoln Avenue ordinance? Seeing none, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2430-14.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Ordinance 2431-14 is also Chapter 7 traffic. This would be for stop intersections at James Court and Allen Street and Mountain Drive and Highwood Road. Make a motion to introduce on second and final reading.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any discussion, any comments on ordinance 2431-14? Seeing none, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2431-14 for stop signs at James Court and Allen Street, Mountain Drive and Highwood Road.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2432-14 is ordinance for Chapter 14, Section 20, entitled Duties and Responsibilities of Foreclosing, Foreclosing Creditor. And make a motion to introduce on first reading.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Just want to read the purpose of this ordinance. The purpose of this section is to enable the Township to regulate the care, maintenance and security and upkeep of the exterior of vacant and abandoned residential properties on which a summons and complaint in an action to foreclose has been filed. Ordinance 2433-14 is a refunding bond ordinance providing for payment of amounts owing to others for taxes levied in and by the Township. This is appropriating $2,284,702 in bonds or notes. Make a motion to introduce on first reading.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spago?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Okay. No ABC hearing? Correct. Any other comments?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. And make a motion to adjourn and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Just in time, Mary.
Second, thank you. Most appreciated.